Start this meeting. My name is Councilor Clint Bruce, Chairman of the Public Safety Committee is now four, about four, four P M. We have with me, um, Counselor Santinello, who's also on the Public Safety Committee. And then we have with us, uh, City Counselor, uh, Data Govan, and I don't see any other counselors on here. Um, so we're just gonna go ahead and get started. Actually, let's go around the room so folks can introduce themselves, so we get it on a public record. Um, I introduce myself and then, uh, Brian will start, we'll go around this way.
Okay, uh, Brian Santinello, uh, Counselor at Large in Springfield, Mass. And, uh, thank you so much for holding this meeting, by the way, it's very important.
Uh, Chris Scott Stone, so that's the vote.
Angelica Castro, Lamar Click Bruce, uh, campaign.
Walter Crowe, President, McKnight Neighborhood Council. You're in white with EverSource, so the Springfield Underground Department.
Vanessa Klein, Strategic Accounts for EverSource.
And Amy Henderson, Community Relations for the City of Springfield.
And again, we also have online, Desi Jackson, Representatives Ohill, uh, Maria Wilson, Commissioner Cowby, Richie Allen, um, and Kathy Brown, also a neighborhood representation as well. Alright, so we're just gonna get started, um. Really had a great meeting with, um, our partners from, uh, EverSource, uh, really discussing, um, uh, our, our streetlights in our city, in the city of Springfield. And they were very, very receptive, uh, to, to our call. And, um, so I, I did lay out some questions, uh, for them as well before we get started. But again, I just wanna thank EverSource for being here, uh, reached out, uh, promptly, they responded and then, uh, told me they'll, they'll be willing to work with us, so that's being a good partner and, um, looking forward to coming up with some solutions to our, to our questions, uh, where I think we are headed in the right direction. Um, so Vanessa, the team, we'll just, again, streetlights, how many lights, uh, do we have in, in the city of Springfield, whoever wants to, uh, take that on?
Total, I'm not sure the number, if you. It's out or like it's total?
So, total or, well, this, this. Total and also lights out that we have, do we, do we know off the top?
Sixteen thousand lights, total. Out, we don't, I don't have a number of lights out.
Okay.
Tickets in the system, I don't know.
Got you.
And they come in daily.
Some are dim or, you know.
Okay, alright. And then, um, again, so that you talked about the ticket, uh, policy, now is that typically to call the three one one? And, and they're also going to the EverSource site to, to file a ticket and then, uh, what is like typically the, uh, timeframe for those getting repaired?
The way that works, when somebody goes on the three one one site, they're calls and I believe, I think you do either way, um. It goes into a queue which goes to our field techs who write the jobs, they write it for repair. Um, that job will get sent out, um, we had a new process last few months, we, we, we are trying. Last few months, we're to go right to our overhead department and try to repair those that come in immediately to not allow a list to grow, if you will, so we're trying to hit, hit those right away. Any of the ones that have been in there, um, once it goes from the field techs, it goes out to crew, as far as turnaround time. Barring emergencies, we have crews that work on them every day with the overhead, but some are bigger issues, some could be feed issues, require digging, you know, moratorium comes into play. Um, some get taken out from malicious activity and there's just a lot that goes into it, so that light can. We try to address it pretty properly, I mean, my, I have crews out weekly doing them, the overhead has crews out daily doing them.
Got you. Okay, and, and the reason why we really wanna have, have this discussion, because we truly believe, my colleague here and I know my colleague, uh, online, is a truly, uh, public safety, um, I just truly believe that well-lit areas will, will deter as much as they can. So we have some areas that we know for sure, uh, need to be addressed more, more than others, and again, I don't know all the areas, nor, nor do I claim to, and that's why we, we sort of invited, or we did invite the neighborhood councils to kinda let us know what's going on in, in their neighborhoods and what they are seeing, so that way we can hopefully address, um, some of these, some of these not, uh, lit areas. And also some, some, I know, uh, Counselor Santinello has some areas that don't even have lights at all. So we, we have to find out, um, whether it's the city or EverSource, but we wanna find out what we can do moving forward to make sure those areas are addressed. So I'll, I'll pause there and not have Brian, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you so much for having this meeting, I took a tour of part of the city. I went down Outer Belt Highway and, uh, went all the way down to, uh, I ninety, all the way down to Sumner Avenue. And I counted eight lights out near the X, eight. And when I got around the Bing Theater, I could not believe the dimness and the darkness, where there's no real lumens coming off those lights. And also when you get to the X, you have those historic lamps that don't give enough lumens off. And my concern, and, and my other concern is Outer Belt Highway doesn't have one light, it never has had one light, why is it, that's a, it's a highway? There's not one lamp there, there's, there's no lighting in the whole, uh, one and a half mile strip, not one. There's not one light that's even, even up.
Where is Outer Belt Highway?
Outer Belt Highway is, uh, Parker Street, all the way down to Sumner Avenue. Alice, uh, is it, uh, Coolie Street, all the way down to, to the highway, uh, to, um.
By Kylie?
Yeah, by, by Kylie, well, well Kylie, that, that's a crossing. People, the, the students cross that area. But there's no, at night, there's not one light that's ever been constructed in that strip. Unless I'm missing something, I didn't see any lights. And I went down a mile and a half trip, there wasn't one light, and that was scary. But then when I got to the Bing Theater, it got almost as scary, cuz it's dark. So those aren't giving off enough lumens, and then when you get to the X, I counted seven, right near C V S, seven lights were out. So whose responsibility, it's not, is it the, is it the people's responsibility to look and report those in, or is that EverSource or the city?
Responsibility, I'm not sure where that lies, I mean, we see them at night, we have troubleshooters that work twenty-four seven. Uh, when they drive by lights, they're supposed to, right, tell us that lights are out, put in trouble tickets, so we do go fix them, but there are sixteen thousand lights, not making excuses, I certainly, they do get missed, I'm sure by us, we are, most of our workforce is during the day. Uh, we have a couple of guys that are run at night doing trouble. I, I will say that we, we, I understand the concern, and we have hired, uh, about two months ago, we have, went out and hired a contractor to do just streetlights. So we've taken on another responsibility to, um, my department hands them out, um, closes out those tickets, follows up with those tickets, signs their timesheets, so we are giving them work. Um, keeping up, I think there's two full crews with this contractor right now, working, you know, they're forty hours a week in the city of Springfield, trying to catch up and address his concerns, so I, I will tell you, it's not taken lightly, we've been trying, so we have taken that on.
Thank you, Mr.
As far as the, the belt, um, highway, I don't know if that's called for when construction happens, or I, I, I'm not, I'm not, um, on that one.
So then, um, or anybody, can, can we get somebody to check into that for us? And then if it's the cities, uh, you just let us know and we're gonna, uh, move forward with that and ask the appropriate questions to the appropriate party.
Yeah.
See if we can get those addressed.
Thank you.
Then you also mentioned the one on, uh, by the library, State Street?
Yeah.
Did you, did you?
Yeah, we've had quite a few fatalities there over the years, and, uh, I know we were supposed to be working on the crosswalk, so that that would be safer. Um, but how's the lighting there at night? Is that adequate in front of the, uh, the main library in Springfield? Do we know?
I'll ride by there tonight.
Personally, I haven't driven by yet.
Yeah, I thought you, yeah, I'll, I'll actually, sorry, uh, yeah, I actually ride by there tonight. I, I'm gonna be out late, so at a basketball game, so I'll make sure I ride by there.
Because I think we've had five fatalities there over the years, five pedestrians have been killed.
I'll give you, I'll give you all the info.
Yeah. And I might, might be a good time to mention our, um, the five-year program that we have, um, so we're a year into it. And it's a program over five years where the lights will be upgraded to LED lights. And so over the five years, the sixteen thousand lights or so will give or take whatever the numbers are that will be upgraded to LED, so we're one year into that program. And that, the program was all laid out, working with the city on how to move through the city to do those upgrades.
Now, at the X with those historic lights, those lamps, are those gonna be upgraded to LED? Because I know we're supposed to have a major design program coming right through the D P W, that that's all gonna be redesigned and reconfigured?
The whole project is happening next year, um, I'm not sure what the city design is for that, with those lights, we can look into it.
Yeah, um, because I'll tell you, it was very dark.
Okay.
And you go down Sumner Avenue, it was scary.
Yeah, we can address that one pretty quick.
Did somebody say something? Thank you so much, Mr.
You're welcome, Counselor Govan, you have your hand up, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, thank you so much, Mr. Chair, um, and thank you for having this meeting, I know that when I came on the council about three years ago, um, and even before I was on the council, you know, the dark streets were, is one of my pet peeves, and as you said, you know, lit streets, um, I believe reduce crime, right, because people are more apt to not necessarily commit crimes, although they commit them in broad daylight, so I don't know how realistic that is. But, um, this is something that is, you know, a serious matter to the city, and if, you know, there are lights out there, they should be lit, you know, so I would really like to know, um, the, um, number of lights that are out, and how quick of a turnaround time does it take for them to get replaced? Um, because I know before, about maybe four or five years ago, I asked about the process of reporting a streetlight out, and I was told that the resident, you know, would have to get out of their car, look at some number on the light pole and then report it that way, or report it to three one one, which I think is not a reasonable request, if someone is out at night in the dark and there's a light out to get out of their car or, or whatever, wherever they are, um, and try to find a, a light number on the post, I don't think is reasonable, I think I heard you say that, um, I think Dan, you say that, um, they, now I think there's people looking for the lights that are out, and those are being reported, which is, I hope is happening and I think is a good thing. Um, but I would really like for us to pay more attention to this, because again, this is something serious, and you know, in our city, um, when we have so many issues, we should at least have our lights, um, on when they're supposed to be on. Um, like, places like, uh, Counselor Santinello mentioned, that don't have any lights even, there's not even any poles out there. I'm not sure what we can do about that, I imagine that we would, the city would have to probably request for a streetlight to be put up there. Um, you know, if that's necessary, uh, but again, my concern, you know, Island Pond Road, State Street, out here in Indian Orchard, Ward Eight, which is part of what, um, Counselor Santinello described, I think, you know, we need to be as bright as downtown Springfield is, if we have lights out here. Um, and we need to make sure that we have that consistently, because I know a lot of times when we have a meeting like this, you know, immediately after the lights come on and it's great, but then it doesn't last, so I just want it to be consistent. Um, and I'm just hoping that we can find a way to have some sort of a permanent, um, solution to this problem that I've seen for years. Thank you, Mr. Chair, those are my comments and questions.
Thank you, uh, Counselor, and before I get to you, uh, Richie, uh, Counselor Govan, do, we met with the EverSource team as well, and that was one of my concerns at a neighborhood meeting, which you, which you kind, which you sort of laid out. They actually had to get out their car, you know, read a poll number, but they assured me, uh, that the constituents and or elected officials do not have to do that, as long as they have like a, a general street name or, or, or area description where it's at, they should be able to, uh, pinpoint it. So that was, that was kinda what prompted me to reach out to EverSource, because I was at a meeting and they, they expressed that, that same concern, which you just said. So I think that's. Yeah, you're welcome. Alright, Richie Allen?
Yes, thank you, uh, Chairman Click Bruce and Counselor Santinello and Counselor Govan, and I see Counselor Davila, uh, and Counselor Delgado. Um, and I've been a homeowner in Springfield for about thirty-nine years, and, uh, streetlights are always an issue. Uh, at various times, they're easier, easier to get addressed. I'm finding in the last couple of years, they're very difficult to get addressed. Uh, on Pondview Drive, uh, I'm gonna, I haven't counted the number of poles on my street with lights, but I'm gonna say it's maybe fourteen or fifteen. Uh, I've reported them to three one one, and they, and have been assured that they would, those would be forwarded, uh, to, uh, to EverSource. Uh, this is various times in the last year, um, this EverSource, uh, had someone on the street about two weeks ago, uh, dealing with a, a lamp, actually two lamps that had been out for months. Um, and I, I saw the, the gentleman, I went over to him and I, I said, you know, there's four other problems on the street, there's two that are out, there's one that's on twenty-four hours and there's one that blinks. And he said, well, they're not on my list. Uh, and, um, he said, I can only work off of the list that I have. Um, and, um, uh, it's just been very frustrating, I, I, I'm really curious about a troubleshooting operation, because there's a lot of, of lamps in East Forest Park, uh, that have been out for months, uh, years. Um, and I, I'm just, I just find the system, to the extent that it's a, a rational system, I find it to be very inadequate to address the problem, there's sixteen thousand streetlights, I realize it's, it, it's quite a volume, but this is a fundamental, uh, service and public safety, uh, condition, and, uh, it's, it's not a difficult problem to solve. The technology, uh, of street poles, uh, hasn't changed in, in decades. Uh, granted, we're into LED lighting, and I, I know some, some lights, uh, some lamps were replaced, uh, along, uh, Roosevelt Avenue a few months ago, which appeared to be kind of a systematic change. But, uh, I just find it very frustrating, I am familiar with the online procedure, I agree wholeheartedly with Counselor Govan, you should not expect, uh, residents to go out at, at, in the dark, on a, on a street with traffic going by to take a picture of the, of the number on the plate, it, it's, uh, you should have crews doing that on a regular basis. Uh, and if, if you, and you claim to do, and if you do, I think you should provide that information to the city, so that we can verify that information. Um, cuz I, I just, I don't see any evidence of it. Um, and, uh, I am familiar, uh, with, um, uh, you know, with various neighborhoods in the city, I used to work for the city and, uh, um, you know, streetlights are a major concern. And, uh, there is a financial penalty that the company can be assessed. Um, and, uh, for failure to respond. Uh, I, I requested information, uh, from Pat Burns and Chris Signoli, uh, a couple of months ago pertaining to streetlights. And I got that information, um, and pertains to three business days. So, um, I'm, I'm just curious what you have for records, uh, and can you document, uh, the number of lights that have been out for more than three business days that have been reported to you? Um, I'm just concerned as a taxpayer that, uh, that the company, uh, uh, isn't treating this seriously enough, or doesn't have the, the system in place to address it adequately. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you, uh, uh, Ms. Allen. Anyone wanna address some of his, uh, questions on EverSource or? Want to table that for another?
Um, I think that's information that we'll have to just look into and get back to you, uh, if that's, yeah, and.
Alright, well, well. Richie, thank you for that information, I'll, I'll connect with you as well to get what you got from Pat, that's, that would be helpful for me as well.
Yes, no, I, I, I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, uh, and Pat had reached out to the company, this was back in May.
Yeah.
And it was part of a D P U filing, and I'm happy to send it along to you, uh, after the conclusion of this meeting.
Thank you. Alright, also wanna recognize Counselor Davila, also my colleague, uh, Counselor, uh, Delgado's on the line as well. Sorry that I announced you earlier, didn't, didn't see you all, so I want to formally recognize you both. Alright, any other, also wanna make note on, on the record, um, Walter Crowe is here from our, um, old, what is it, the, uh, McKnight area. And we did have a conversation, or we're, we're gonna have a ongoing conversation regarding, um, the historic, uh, lighting area, so that's gonna be a a to-be, uh, continued conversation as well, so I wanted to make sure we publicly made that on, on the record as well. Uh, Kathy Brown, do you have anything?
Um, yes, thank you, and thank you for addressing this, um, this topic. Um, East Springfield has, has always been interested in, in the streetlights, we've attempted to do fair amount of promotion to the general community about how to, how to report. And, um, I'm glad you're reiterating the fact that you don't need the poll number, I know that information used to be out there exclusively and now, um, and it's been, I don't know, a couple of years that that hasn't been necessary, from my knowledge. Uh, so it's been helpful, but what we've been, what we've been attempting, well, let me just say, I know it's, it's complicated. Although it seems like it's easy. Um, I don't know whether when the new lights, the, um, the LEDs are going in, whether those are replacing broken lights or, um, on you, on working lights right now. I'd be interested to know if that's the case, I also understand that there are kind of three categories of light outages, one, the light bulb's not working, two, the, the wires up the pole, or the wires, the wires above the ground are a problem, and the third is the wires under the ground are a problem. And I'm, from what I've understood, and I've talked with Amy about some of this and some other, um, electric people, company people, and of course, the easiest ones are just to, to put the new bulb in. And those should happen quickly, and I, it's been my experience in East Springfield when I've turned one in, um, whether with a poll number or with a street address, um, if it's just been the pole, the light in the pole, they tend to get fixed reasonably quickly. Um, sometimes they get fixed and then they still flicker, so we report back, so I guess, I guess I wanna say, I appreciate you to, us having a discussion about this, I know it's a long-term, ongoing issue. Um, and, and I agree, lighting is a public safety issue, but anything that, in my opinion, that we can do to have a multi-pronged approach to reporting is useful. Because if I notice a light out, and if I can safely identify that light in exact location, not six houses down from the purple house on the corner, cuz that doesn't help the electric company at all, um, but a reasonable location, and if I can, or encourage people to turn them in, cuz we're the ones who drive our neighborhood streets and we, I look at my street every night and I see what lights are working, and if one is not, we turn it in, so a multi-pronged approach, I'm glad that there's doing some outreach and some, um, some preventative eyeballing of which lights are out, I think that's important. Um, and, and if I can speak to your, I, I, was it Richie, I don't know who said it, the, there were four other lights out on your street, but three were on the list. I think that it would be, move us all to encourage the, um, electric company to, to get those lists consolidated, my sense is, is those lists didn't, weren't all consolidated, and they need to be, and I know Amy's working on a little project for me, I talked with her, um, a couple of months ago, East Springfield, the question I asked was, in East Springfield, how many lights do we have that are out, and how long have each of those lights been out? And then we can determine what we do from there, and we're gonna continue to promote that residents, uh, identify and report either through three one one or through the online app or the telephone number that the electric, um, company provides, but thank you for the, the opportunity.
Yes, thank you Kathy, um, for all you do for our city, we truly appreciate you, thank you. Alright, now we'll, um, I see you Commissioner Cowby, I'm gonna go to Counselor Davila, and then I'll make sure I get to you Commissioner Cowby. Uh, Counselor Davila, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, good afternoon, everybody, and, uh, good afternoon to the EverSource team, thank you for your presentation. Um, I do have a plethora of questions, but let me start with, uh, what I think might be the easiest question, so we talked about reporting the light bulbs. And I know that I had personally called before, and you gotta look at this number within the poll. Oftentimes, the, this number is like, yeh, big. And you really gotta look hard. So, no reasonable person is gonna stand there, particularly at night, looking for this number. Uh, uh, once you do report it, it takes weeks and weeks to fix. So my question is, one of my many questions is, is there any way that as we move forward that we can reorient this, uh, poll ID system to make it more visible, uh, more friendly to the citizen to report?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can speak to the poll numbers and then try, um, and, and I understand, nobody wants to pull over, I'm not gonna pull over on a busy street at night. It's not safe, nobody wants you to pick your camera while you're driving, um. The best we can do is, is like, um, like she had said right before you, any kind of address, um, even if you sit in front of House Twenty, or House forty, or thirty, anything gives us a rough idea versus saying a, a poll out on, on Main Street, certainly there's, there's, it's hard to monitor that, so that we don't have to be very specific, but any little bit of information helps us get it down to where we can go look at one or two lights, check two or three lights versus checking, you know, a, a mile of a street, for example, so. I know, so we put up now, I'm sorry.
No, no, I, I'm sorry, what's your name, sir?
Uh, Dan White.
Dan, uh, thank you, Dan, no, I get that, Dan, I'm gonna give you a classic example.
Yep.
Right across, I live on Fergley Ave. And I got three poles on my own street, one of them right across my street, or my house, that I had to report, and guess what I have to do? I have to walk all the way, way over there, try to find the number.
No, you don't.
And call you guys. So, is there any way that we can make these numbers bigger? And facing forward, so that people can easily identify them to call you? Because I don't mind walking over, but somebody driving by, somebody in the middle at nighttime is not going to do that. Let's be realistic, they're just not going to do it, so I think it's an easy fix, where we can reorient the numbers. Because some of these numbers are pretty high up and small. So what I'm saying is, let's put them facing forward, bigger, uh, with a, a, some sort of a color as opposed to silver that gets lost, that it can be easily seen, that is, that is my succinct question.
Yeah, we can, the bigger nomenclatures, that's an easy request, I can, I can ask and look into that for you. But, um, even an address would be, would be just as good as a poll number for us, it gets us in the right area, polls can be every tent houses, so an address is, uh, will get us into the right, the right poll.
Okay, alright, so I think that's an easy, uh, fix, and I hope that we can see progress on that, because this, this is a multi, I think this is a a problem that is happening for a while. Expect to be something like that, but I do expect to see some sort of a progress in this. Now, Dan, my other question is, uh, you talked about having crews, correct, at nighttime?
We have, uh, coverage throughout the night, there are a couple of overhead, we call them troubleshooters, and that's what they do, they monitor trouble, they're quick to respond, they're on-site versus calling in crews from home, it's a lot, it's a much quicker response, yes, for, for outages and things that happen right away, so you know, certainly if they're, they're busy throughout the night, they're not gonna drive around and do their, their inspections or their checks as much as they would on a slower night, but they're out there, they do turn in the trouble tickets, and, uh, I, I will, I will tell you, now, now is the time for these, we we're hearing you, I've been in this position for a few months, I mean, Amy Vesta can attest this, we, we do have an outside contractor, it's a three-year contract with them to do strictly streetlights in the city, so I'm, we as a team are, are, are trying to change this practice, that has certainly could use some, uh, use some help.
Dan, who is this contractor?
It's Central Connecticut, they're, they're, they're a lighting company out of, uh, that we've, we've hired, we've gotten from our, our partner companies in, uh, the Connecticut area.
Okay, Dan, I'm gonna go back to troubleshooting a second, but let me ask you this, you talked about, um, having crews out there in the daytime too, and I'm sure you guys are doing your troubleshooting and doing your, your, um, your due diligence, but can you tell me what's the dedicated workforce altogether to address these issues with the lights?
Dedicated workforce daily, we have an overhead crew that is assigned to streetlights daily, and then we have this outside contractor that has done daily, we used to have one of our crews doing it, uh, we're just not able to keep up. It's, uh, so we've gone to an outside resource.
How many guys are we talking about, Dan?
I don't know how many the troubleshooter, we have, we give, they, they have two crews on our site, on our property every day, as far as, uh, manpower, I, I would have to get that answer for you. I don't know if their crews are three people or four people, I, I wouldn't wanna give you a wrong number.
No, I understand.
And so I know since we've, I'll just, just to put a number out there, sorry for interrupting, I know since we hired the contractor to strictly address the streetlights, compared to a couple of months ago, looking at the trouble tickets in the system, that number has been cut in half. Um, so, I believe it's.
It's a lot.
It, yeah, it's half in just a couple of months, and so they're making great progress on what's already in the system. So, um, they'll, and like Dan said, it's a three-year, um, contract with them, and so we're really hoping over the next couple of months especially, um, that number will continue. And so we're really hoping over the next couple of months especially, um, that number will continue to decline and. Um, be able to be right back on top of things.
Now, I feel like I should know the answer to this question, but myself, uh, as a consumer. When we get our bill, is there a portion of that bill dedicated that was fixing the streetlights?
I don't know that answer.
I'm not, that's something that I'll have to get back to you on. I'll find out. Yeah.
That's fine. Uh, Mr., if you give me like one more minute of your grace, please. Uh, so. Dan, you talked about fixing the streets. Can you tell me? How many, I think I saw something that'll say, well, sixteen thousand poles, is that correct?
Sixteen thousand lights approximately, yes.
Sixteen thousand lights. And what percentage of those are out?
Yeah, we are, we're gonna have them look into that, uh, counselor. Uh, one of the questions we did ask earlier, sorry.
Okay, my apologies, Mr. Chair. And so, so Dan, going back to troubleshooting, and this is honestly a frustration on mine. And I see that Council of Santinelo already brought it up. I live in the great neighborhood of Forest Park. And, uh, we do have issues here. Uh, I find Y Street often to be dark. I find Sumner Avenue often to be dark. Uh, I, I could ask you, easily ask you why, but honestly, I do expect those lights to be fixed pronto. Uh, because Y Street is a very high traffic area, so is Sumner Avenue. Particularly from Y Street all the way down to the X. Um, you know, Dan, you just said you got here in that position, so I'm not gonna, uh. I'm gonna, I'm not going to expect you to give me full answer in that, okay, to be fair. But with all your respect, I do, do expect those lights to be fixed pronto. Now, right in front of Subway. Right in front of Subway, somebody took out a light pole, one of these old style light poles. I have personally seen it every day for the last two weeks. How is it possible that you guys either don't know about it and/or it's not fixed yet?
In front of Subway on Sumner Avenue?
He would take, yeah.
We could possibly know about it. It certainly could be a trouble ticket in our system, so I don't want to say we don't know about it. If the base is damaged, um, that's a contractor. We have to have the base replaced. Uh, that would need digging, city approval to, you know, put a shovel on the ground, uh, conduit could have been damaged. I. I, I don't know that one in particular, but certainly when poles get hit, sometimes it's, it's harder than just putting a light pole back up.
So, right, so when the light pole, this obviously was hit. This was an accident. It, it's obviously torn. And it's not the, it's not the metal, it's not the wood pole. It's like the metal looking pole. So it was a bad accident. Um, I'm just baffled that it's not fixed. It's been two weeks. I mean, does the police report it or does a wrestling have to report it? Uh, uh, how do you guys don't know about?
All of the above. There'd be police if it was an accident. It'd be, um, pedestrian, be there, you know. Could be anybody. Could be one of us driving by. I mean, it certainly gets reported multiple ways.
Yeah, Dan, can you send somebody out there to look at it, uh, so we can get that up and going?
Wait, Subway, yes.
No, it's, uh, Sumner Avenue near Subway.
Sumner Avenue is probably.
Yeah, that location. I don't know the, the pole number, um, and so I will finish with this, uh, Mr. Chair. Dan, thank you for your help, uh, for your answering my questions. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, uh, you know, unfortunately in Springfield, we have this perception that we are a bad city. That is not a safe city. And having this darkness does not help. Does not help us at all for safety reasons, for perception issues, uh, for safety issues. So, uh, I'm sure you guys are doing your best. But doing your best is not enough any longer. We have to step it up and, you know, people have been complaining about all this. And so we will, uh, you know, be happily to work with you to get this fixed. So. Uh, please feel free to contact me if I can be of any assistance. Uh, let me give you my number, Dan, if I may, four one three. You can call me directly. Two nine seven eight six one four, uh, my direct, my number. And, uh, I'm also, my email. Uh, it's on the city council website, and you can call the city council office and they will provide it for you. Uh, but thank you, Dan. Thank you, ladies. Uh, Mr. Chair, thank you for this meeting. Uh, that's all I have for now. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, if you have anything.
Oh, uh, thank you. I'm sorry for being late and I apologize if you guys already answered some of these questions. Uh, I did have. One question to, I mean, what's the technology like nowadays on these poles? Is it, you know about it if somebody reports it? Do we have, are there like light poles that have sensors? Like what is there? Am I talking too much in the future?
No, no, there's, no, no sensors. Not yet. It's coming, right? Ho- hopefully one day. Um, I know our companies look into a lot of the automated systems, but it's, it's strictly reporting.
So it's strictly reported, so we've got to do a good job of reporting, because I'm assuming you guys are not gonna know unless somebody points it out. Uh, what's the turnaround time once somebody does report a light out?
Yeah, really varies depending on the issue. Yeah, and so, you know, it could be. That just the light needs to be replaced. It could be a feeder issue. It could be, um, that there's.
Base, uh, digging if the feed was bad. It saves a couple of days at times. No excuses, sometimes a week.
Yeah, I, I'm just curious, like, what's the, like, reasonable expectation for somebody to have?
We are, we're, we're making some changes. I'm not sure if, earlier I said, we have, um, an outside contractor.
Yep.
That we have hired, um, out of Central Connecticut, and, um, it's been about a month and a half now. The first couple of weeks were. More recon work, if you will, right? Seeing what they were, getting started, getting set up, getting material, getting them home based at our work center and now they're often. So we are, we're hoping to, you know, answer your, your calls here.
Yeah, and that's really in response to knowing this is an important issue for the city, really hearing it and taking it serious.
All right, I appreciate that. Just, I just wanted to ask those, because I wasn't sure. Uh, and, you know, I echo my colleagues', you know, sentiments in terms of, obviously, lights being out, not a good look. Um, I'm all, I'm so worried about the folks who are, you know, working and trying to get to point, second, third shift. Right? And they're getting out there, um, and so, you know, definitely need the lights on, uh, for those folks, but, um. Yeah, I guess all the other questions folks ask, I was just more, what is, I guess, what are the majority of the cases? That you have, like, what are the top three? Obviously, a light off the bulb dies. Like, how long does it take for a bulb to die?
Um, I can tell you, I think she has earlier, whether it's the new LED project that we're doing. We are swapping out heads that work for the LEDs path that the city had approved given to us, so that is happening. And any new light that we replace is getting a new LED head. So those are supposed to be lifetime, right? The LED stuff could be thousands of hours.
Um, what percentage of, would you say of the sixteen thousand or roughly?
This is year one of five, so we're halfway through year one of five.
All right.
So we can do that. Um, top five, um. It's lights and photocells. They're both at the top. Photocell turns on and off, dust to dawn, right? Lights burn out. They're old, um. A lot of it's a feed issue. Springfield, a lot of it is underground, so it's, there, there are smaller streetlight wires. They, they. They do burn up after years and years in Springfield, um, it's catching up. But, but, those are two big ones.
All right. Now, I just wanted to kind of get an idea of what we have and so that we know what to expect when we're reporting stuff. Maybe you had a question, sure, all right.
I did want to add quickly too, when we did speak with EverSource, there, the lights in the city are on a timer, right? They do turn on automatically, so, because there was some verbiage as to like, you know, the lights need to be turned on, but. I think it's just a matter of some are out, haven't been reported, or they haven't gotten to them, um. But they are turned on automatically on a timer. It's not, yeah.
Automatic dust to dawn.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if I may, please.
Yes.
Um, regarding that, the, um, the automatic timers, I know when daylight savings times happen. Um, a lot of times the timer, I don't know if it's has to be reset or. Um, if it's automatic, but I, I noticed sometimes at four, four thirty, the. Lights, uh, are, the streets are getting dark, and I know that our students are walking home from school during that time. So I'm just hoping that maybe when the fall gets here and, you know, um, daylight saving time happen and it starts getting darker sooner. We can maybe be mindful of that. Just put, put another thing on your long list of to-dos. But that would be good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I don't want to, um, create the wrong assumption, uh, not so much as a, as a, as a timer. We don't, we don't set that. There's more of what is called as a photocell on top of your, of your light. So it's like in your front porch when it's dark and your light would go on at night, kind of the same thing, but they. Uh, we, we do the technology that we have and they do wear out. It's kind of like light bulbs, so they're not as. So those, it's, it's almost two parts. So you have two things that can go bad for a bulb to look bad, so it's.
Yeah, so it's a sensor sensing the light. Yeah, so there's not actually.
Is it like solar? Is it like so?
But it's, um.
Cause you know, when you have a solar thing, when the, the sun goes down, the lights come on.
Very similar to that, yeah, yeah.
Cause if that were the case, then we wouldn't have an issue if, with daylight savings times because of the sun would go down. So I don't know.
Yep.
But I don't know, just something for us to be mindful of, I think.
All right, it's four forty-five.
Did we lose Commissioner Calvi?
Yeah, he texted me, said, yeah, I'll go.
Okay.
Um.
If he has a question or.
Yeah, yeah.
I want to thank EverSource.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you so much. Most helpful.
Yeah.
It's a lot in our system.
Yeah.
And we are, um, almost a new regime, if you will, and then the operations of it, and we're trying to address these concerns, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so again, thank you. I want to thank again EverSource for your time. I called you Amanda and Amy. I'm sorry, I apologize. Target to my eyes.
It's all right.
Try focus on. Um, but listen, uh, again, you know, I'm, I'm getting, I'm a constituent now. I'm getting older now and I can't really see on these roads, so you guys gotta help me out. Uh, but truly, again, thank you for your time. You, you guys are, are awesome. And I think we're going, this is gonna be an ongoing, ongoing discussion. I plan on, and hopefully the team will support. We plan on, well, I, we plan on going to the neighborhood councils. To, uh, let them know what we're working on with you all and see how we can come up with some, uh, solutions to make sure our neighborhoods are, are feeling safe. And addressing some of these issues that they may have, because again, we don't, we can't see everything. And we're not gonna accomplish everything right away, but if we can take some small steps, I think that'll be huge for our community. And making sure, you know, we're moving in the right direction, uh, with this issue of, of our lights.
Yeah.
Uh, so again, I, I thank you for your time. Thank you for my, uh, counselor, uh, Santinelo for, for bringing this to, to the attention. Which is on my radar anyway, but again, thank you, uh, to my colleague as well, uh, Delgado and also Victor. Counselor Davila, who's on the public safety, and Counselor Govan for being on, on the call as well. Uh, so again, I.
Counselor Allen just joined you, um, for your information, uh, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I want to recognize Counselor Allen for the record. I thank you, Counselor Allen. Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Counselor. Appreciate it.
Yeah, so it's four, so it's four forty-seven and I gotta follow the rules. As they tell me, I have to say now this meeting is adjourned.